I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:30. Roll call, William Johnston.
Yeah.
Thomas Grafenino.
Yes.
Lisa Krakler.
Here.
Lynn Colligan.
Yeah.
Phil Diorio is here, also present. We have Stephen Kiley, Town Attorney. First order of business is to review and approve the September 18th, 2024 minutes.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
To approve the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have one resolution. Christina, will you give us a synopsis of that, please?
Application by Moses Sardas and Maria Blanco for a variance at Freglin Drive, Shelter Island, New York, of County Tax Map 700-17-1-70. The zoning board of appeal has reviewed the subject application and determined that this is a type-two option, does not further see price required. The applicant requests an area variance. Danko Section 133-6B5A requires that all structures hold a 40 front yard setback, and here the proposed pool will only hold a 31.8 foot setback, plus an 8.2 feet variance required. Resolution of the Board is to approve the request for an area variance for a front yard setback relief of 8.2 feet for the subject pool, as reflected in the Mycohammer LSPC proposed site plan dated March 18, 2022, last revised April 24, 2023, subject to the following condition. The applicants and their successors shall ensure that four feet private hedge be perpetually maintained along both the Mimosa Place and Glen Drive lot lines, so the pool is adequately screened from the public.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
William Johnston III, approve.
I will second.
All in favor? Let's get a roll call. Sorry, country, I'd need the motion first.
Right.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
Tom Grafenino. Lisa Krakler.
Lisa Krakler, yes.
Lynn Colligan, yes.
And Phil Diorio votes yes. Okay, we have four applications to deal with tonight. The first one, though, I think we're just gonna... Are we reopening the hearing? I mean, this was adjourned.
Reopen and adjourn.
Okay, so can I have a motion to reopen the hearing and then adjourn it until 11:13?
I'll make a motion. And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying because I'm a neighbor.
It's punch, it's Perlman.
Oh, Perlman. Oh, I thought you said Sylvester Manor.
So you're gonna vote yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me.
So we're reopening the hearing and adjourning it until November 13th. We're waiting for the town's secret determination. All right, next up was Sylvester Manor, 80 North Ferry Road, and they had asked for another adjournment. Christina, where are we gonna push that to? Do you want to put that till November 13th at this point?
They didn't specify, so maybe we can or we can do the applicant here November 13th.
Yeah, that would be fine. Okay, so do we need to reopen this and then adjourn it again?
Same way.
Okay, so can I get a motion to reopen the hearing and adjourn it until November 13th?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have 3 Locust Avenue. I'm going to recuse myself. I'm a friend of the applicant, and I will get out of here. You guys can give me a call when this is over.
I have a pen, my own.
It's a pencil.
Pencil, good, thanks.
Thank you. Christina, can you read the notice?
Hearing on application of William Cummings, owner of Free Lots of Allen, New York, a corner lot which is located in AA, reverse to A residential zoning district near Shore Ave., district. May more specifically describe on the South County Tax Map at 700-6-3-14. The applicant is seeking two variances from Shelter Island, San Paul, Section 133-6B5A to hold both 17.9 feet and 22.3 feet. Front yard setback where 40 is required. Construct the second floor back over the system enclosed four. Additionally, especially certain that is required person to Section 133-23A in order to alter or expand a pre-existing non-conforming building. Correspondence and support was received from David Ward, 5 Locusts Avenue. A letter of position was submitted by Shelter Island Heights Property Owners Corporation. Letter of position was submitted by Pat Hunt and Rich Forham, 1 Locusts Avenue.
Thanks, Christina. And who's presenting?
Good evening. Matt Sherman with Sherman Engineering Consulting. I'm here on behalf of the property owner, William Cummings, who's in the audience as well tonight. It's my normal routine. I've got a quick PowerPoint to show with you guys to show you the details of the project. Okay, this property, it's down on the bottom of the heights on Chase Creek, tree of Locust Avenue. You've got two road frontages, Meadow Place and then Locust Avenue, and on the far side of Locust Avenue is Chase Creek. This property is double A-zone, is most of the heights. This one refers back to single A-zone for setback purposes. So we've got two front yard setbacks, 40 feet from Meadow, 40 feet from Locust, and then for principal dwelling, 25 feet from the alley, the height zone alley, which is to the south of the property. Because we've also got Chase Creek in the equation, we have 100-foot setback from the wetlands. So this is what we're proposing to do. Right now, there's an existing first-floor covered porch in this area, and this was covered porch at one point. It was enclosed, so it's a enclosed portion of that porch. I'll show you a photograph of it in just a second. What we want to do is put a deck over top of this existing covered porch, put it directly on top of the roof of the porch. Total square footage is going to be 350 square feet. A little bit of it is in the conforming building envelope, which is this section right here, right where the porch meets the house. And so 344 square feet of this porch is going to be non-conforming of this deck, excuse me. 63 feet of it, even though it's not for the ZBA, for the town board, 63 of it is within the adjacent regulated area of the wetlands on the creek. So it's going to be a really basic, simple structure, just a typical three-foot-high safety railing. It's required by New York State Building Code. Railing is going to be designed to match the railing of the first-floor covered porch below. It's going to span the edges of the edge-edge porch, if you're looking at it from the, looking at it from the road. Then you're going to be going back to meet into the building, and this is looking at it from the Hunt's property to the south. This is a photograph of the house, just to kind of give you an idea. I mean, you're all probably very familiar with it, I would imagine. This is also bed and breakfast. These upper two rooms, there's four bed and breakfast rooms in the building, these upper two rooms are going, are two of the bed and breakfast rooms that will enter out onto this, onto this proposed porch. The way this whole project kind of got spawned was there's two Japanese maples in the front of the house, and they weren't doing very well. So the property owner brought Bartlett in to evaluate the trees and see if there was anything they could do to save them. They did some work on both trees. The tree that's in this photograph is not able to be saved. It's too far gone. The other tree that's to the north, we'll call it, that tree was able to be saved. So they're going to be able to keep that tree. This tree's gonna go. When they saw that this tree was having to go and the view of the creek, they thought it was a perfect opportunity to take advantage of the view coming off of those second floors and put a, put a deck up there. What the deck will be used for is for people who are staying in the bed and breakfast. So you're gonna have a couple of people having a cup of coffee, sitting out there reading a book, maybe having a quiet conversation, a cocktail or two at night, is what these decks are. That's the purpose of these decks, and that's how they will end up being used.
Matt, is the deck like one continuous deck or is there a divider?
One continuous deck, yes.
Continuous deck.
Yeah. This shows you the relationship between the Hunt's house here on the left and the applicant's house on the right. This covered porch is where that deck is gonna go. The Hunts had sent a letter in, and they were kind enough to share it with us a couple of weeks ago. Their concerns, and they can certainly speak to their own, their own issues for or against the application, but their concerns, as they were communicated to us, was privacy, light, noise, things like that, which are all perfectly reasonable concerns. So right now, between the two buildings, there's a fair number of trees that run down either in the Heights alley, which runs between the two properties, or on one side or the other of the alley. So the main parts of the houses are shielded from one another. The trees start after where this porch would be. So what we're proposing to do in order to mitigate that is this area right here, which is forward of that first tree that's between the two houses, is plant three arborvitae or something similar to that that can give adequate screening, adequate protection for both properties so that we don't have any kind of privacy concerns.
Do you know what height those would be, Matt, at this point?
We could, I don't know what's readily available right now, but I would say you'd start out with like a six or eight foot, and then it would take a couple of years for them to get, you know, more appreciable, but yes.
Can you go back to that previous picture?
Yeah.
That maple there, that's, is that the northernmost one?
That's the southernmost one. That's the one that's gonna be going away. This is a, just shows the approximate area. I didn't have these trees surveyed for this, for this drawing, but you've got this northern one, which is to remain, the southern one, which is the one that they're not able to save, that would be going away. So that would be the view going out to the creek. And then here's those existing trees that provide privacy between the two buildings, and then the area we'd be looking to plant three new arborvitae would be here, just, just inside the property line and directly between the line of sight, and I'll show you the next slide, the line of sight between that portion of the deck that, that they're concerned about and their deck.
Will three be enough, Matt? Will three be sufficient to block what they're concerned about, do you think?
I think so, and I'll show you why on the next slide, yeah. So chosen aerial, this shows an aerial view of the, of the two properties. Let me zoom in a little bit better. So this is the deck here that we're talking about, the area for deck. This is the area we'd be looking to put those trees, and then this right here is the closest portion of their covered porch. So we're not talking about, it's not the length of the house, it's not, you know, it's a very small confined area that we really have to worry about the focus on in order to make sure that we're not big enough obnoxious to neighbors. One of the things that I did want to read, just because it was significantly in our favor, is the one letter from David Ward. And David Ward is, he's in this house right here. So it's really, it's as close, if not closer, to the subject property. It's also directly across from the parking area and has more, more chance of having an impact from the operations of the bed and breakfast. And what he had said was, and this is in an email that he had sent to the Heights, which the Heights had shared with us, that his father Ralph purchased what is now the, David's house on Chase Creek in the 60s, and when Bill and Sharon bought it and proposed to open the B&amp;B, his father was violently opposed, expecting settlement and all manners of unpleasantness. The unpleasantness he had expected never came. Decades later, I can, I can testify that my wife and I have never had a bad experience as a result of Bill's enterprise. His guests come to Shelter Island to enjoy the things the rest of us treasure so much about the island, the beauty, the tranquility. His guests are respectful and friendly when they come and go, and we have never been disturbed by loud or obnoxious noise. Bill's a wonderful neighbor, manages the establishment well. Mally and I support his application and complete confidence that this improvement to his property will pose no bother to us or to others. So, you know, there's gonna be conflicting opinions on whether this deck is a good idea or not. I think that that, that speaks well to the way that this, this has been operated in the amount of time that the Cummings have been, that Bill's been operating it, and there's nothing, no reason to think that anything would change moving forward.
How many people do you anticipate being able to utilize this deck at once?
I think it would be reasonable to expect two to three people from either room. So you might have four or five people on the deck at a given time. I think that would be a high-end estimate. It obviously wouldn't be limited, you know, if you had four people, five people, six people staying at the bed and breakfast who were there all together as a group, you might have six people out there. But either way, I think it's important to keep in mind that the people who are gonna be using this are the people staying at the bed and breakfast. They're there because of the quiet tranquility of that bed and breakfast and where it is on the creek. So even if you have four, five, six people up there, excuse me, they're not gonna be thrown a raid. It's not gonna be a loud, obnoxious thing. If there is any kind of problem, if there is any kind of disturbance, Bill's on site. So he'll know it before anybody else. If he doesn't know it before anybody else, he's a text or a phone call away. So, you know, there's no reason to, I think, to reasonably expect that the way that the facility's been operated up until today is gonna change tomorrow if this, if this deck gets approved.
I think just that goes back to my point of like, it is one continuous deck, and that does allow for a larger congregational area. So, Matt, did you, did you explore dividing it at all?
They hadn't really even thought about it, but we could certainly do that. If that's, if the Board's not comfortable with it being able to be used as one structure, we could certainly divide it, because they are two separate rooms. So there's no reason why we couldn't put a divider up, so the one room has the north half and the other room has the south half. That's, that's perfect. That's reasonable, yeah.
And my other question is, has there been an inspection of the roof at this point that it can handle putting a deck on it? I just don't want to approve this project and then all of a sudden have, now we gotta rip out the roof because it can't take it.
I looked at the roof structure, and the reason why I designed it the way that we did is so that it can be attached to the building on the inside, and it can sit over top of the outside head or the outside rim of the roof, so it's not sitting on the roof itself.
How old is the roof?
I don't know, I don't know how old the roof is.
Do you want to?
No, you know how old the roof is? The roof was redone three years ago. Yeah, three years old.
Okay, thank you.
The spans in the middle, so if the roof joists, the trusses, they're not strong enough to have a deck sitting on them. That's why we pulled it out to the front edge, so that we don't have to worry about rebuilding the roof or doing anything along those lines.
Okay.
One of the things that had been brought up in opposition to this deck was the fact that this is a contributing structure to the Heights Historic District, and that decks like, you know, roof decks like this are not seen on contributing structures. It didn't say that there weren't any, but it implied that that's not something that's gonna be found on these buildings. So I took a quick drive around, and actually, the closest building is this one here to the south at, what's this one, 1 Oxford, which was built in 1893, so it's a, it's a contributing structure. It's got a very, very similar roof deck on the water side. So if you were to look at this building, that's a covered lower porch, and on the water side of the building and above it, it is that roof deck. This is another one. This one is up at 17 Spring Garden, same thing, first floor. A portion of this is, you can't see because of the hedge unfortunately, but a portion of it is overbuilt, over the house, and a portion is over covered porch, and that's on both sides of this gable. So it runs from side to side as well. And that's a contributing structure. This is the one at the 8 Chase. I'm not sure if 8 Chase is a contributing structure or not, but this is just to show there's residential buildings with these on them and there's commercial buildings with these on them. So it's not, not anything unusual by any means. And then the last one here at 4 Clinton, this is a contributing structure, and it also has the same kind of roof deck. So again, not anything that's, that's unheard of in the Heights. We think it's a relatively simplistic addition. We do understand and appreciate the concerns of the neighbors, that they don't want to have something that's gonna be offensive or obnoxious to them. Bill stands on his record as the property owner as to how he's treated and worked with his neighbors in the past, and that that will continue moving forward. And I think that concerns such as noise and light, things along those lines, if they are any types of issues, they can easily be mitigated with some planting. That's all I have. If the Board has any additional questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer. Otherwise, get out of the way.
Anyone have questions for Matt? I'm still not convinced the three trees is gonna cut it. Could you just show me that aerial again?
Yeah.
Thanks. Because they're rather tall and thin, arborvitae, right?
Initially, yeah, but they'll grow out, what, six, seven feet as, as they grow. So it's gonna take a little bit of time. If, yeah, I'm not a tree expert, so I can't say how long it would take for arborvitae to fill in so that you're not gonna know that there's a building on the other side of them. That may not, that may take a little while before that's, that's accomplished. We could see if you wanted, if the Board felt five or six was more appropriate, by all means, we'll entertain any of that. One of the things we, Bill and I had actually talked about, let's see if we got the trip, was the Hunts have this tree, this big old fir tree right here between their view of the house and the creek. And we were even talking about it, and I don't think this would be a viable alternative, but even talking about picking that up and moving it over so that it's between the Hunt's house and, and the Cummings' house, blocking the view. That opens up their view to the creek, and it blocks their, the view between the two houses. So that's an alternative. He's open to whatever needs to be done in order to make this a beneficial or a win-win on both sides.
Okay.
Would the applicant be willing to reach out to like a landscape architect, get expert opinion on screening?
If he has to, yeah, obviously, if that's what it's gonna take to move this forward.
Landscape architect or just like a tree company or someone that has knowledge, because you're admittedly not an expert.
Absolutely.
So Matt, if you could come up with some plan and present it to the Board before the next time?
I think it should be a little bit more than six foot high. I think you can get arborvitae a lot taller. I think they should start.
And Matt, you know, we can discuss that at our work session, but I think what we need, what we require from the applicant at this point is an actual plan for the landscape, a vegetation plan.
Okay, absolutely. We'll reach out to, to, if not a landscape architect, at least someone who's, who's well versed in it, for something like that, absolutely.
Right. I know you showed the pictures of the other portraits wide open. Is there any, ever any thought about this being covered by an awning or, or side panels or anything?
No, not at all, yeah.
And just, just for clarification, if the Japanese maples weren't dying, would the applicant be even considering adding those decks, decks or not?
Obviously, it would be in the way of the view of the creek. So the benefit of the deck is the view of the creek, and with those trees in the way, you've got the view of the trees. So that's really, you know, the idea that that one tree wasn't gonna be able to be saved.
Would they ever think about just replacing that tree?
They could replace the tree, yeah, absolutely, but then the idea, you know, it depends. If the, if the Board said, you know what, we think that the decks are decked too far, we can't approve that, and they needed to put some trees in, and he'd still probably put trees along the property line to give privacy, but then he could certainly go back and plant something else in front if there's nothing that's viewed, was obstructing.
Any other questions for Matt from the Board?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience who would like to come up and speak on this application? Bridge, come on up. State your name.
Hi, I'm Bridge Ferthan. I have a next door, and this, on the face of it, it looks like it's an application for a simple variance, a little bit of a debt, not a big change, this and that. Actually, it's an application for a change of use. He's running a bed and breakfast. It's been great next door. We have no problems because it's an indoor business. This opens the door to its being an outdoor business, which is a completely different environment. It's a, it's a business that's running in a residential neighborhood. We're happy to have him and his business run there. As the word said, there are really no problems. We don't want to get in a situation where the problems come out on the upper deck all of a sudden, and now every weekend with a different set of guests that want to experience it for the first time with their laptops and their telephone, and they're doing business and this and that, and having a couple of cocktails. That can happen in the guest house, but not outside the guest house. So I feel really it's a substantial change of use. It's a non-conforming use to begin with, and I'm just a close one, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak about to this application?
Hi, good evening. I'm here, Raymond. I'm here speaking this evening on behalf of the Shelter Island Heights Property Owners Corporation. As the clerk read, we did send, I did send in a letter, and the Heights is not supportive of this application. And first, I would say that the proposed new second floor expansion is a benefit for the transient guest, as Matt indicated, which is directly off two of the rental rooms. So it's not for personal use of the property owner. As a matter of fact, you have to enter those, that deck from, by either going through the rooms or through a bathroom to get to that deck. The second thing is, is as you know, as was also spoken about, the project is within the Heights Historic District, which is both on the National and New York State Rents. It's a contributing structure circa 19, I'm sorry, 1890, according to the Building Department records. So three out of four properties that Matt showed are non-contributing to the Heights Historic District. Only 4 Clinton is a contributing structure, and its owner used and occupied.
17 Spring Garden isn't?
No. The application submitted only had one previous zoning board approval, within there are actually two zoning board approvals in the town records. One was from 10-18-2000, the other was 1-23-2003. So there is an error there. And the Heights Architectural Committee commented on the issues of this proposal, which we included in your letter. In general, the Architectural Committee feels that it's not equating the architectural character of the other contributing structures in the historic district. So the Heights developed the Architectural and Construction Review Criteria with a checklist, and that was at the request of the Town Zoning Board, because they wanted the Heights to apply consisting criteria to all of the applications, one of which, as you know, from the letters that we sent in, did not support the New York State special permit, where both directly impacted neighbor, won reasonable concerns and have an objection to that with the application. And that is part of the criteria. Even with one nearby neighbor supporting this application, I would note that there's no outdoor spaces for guests at this time. And before I close, I have a few comments as it relates to zoning that I noticed. One, I had to look at the Building Department files this afternoon, and there doesn't appear to be any documentation of the miscellaneous small items, such as the second patio, trellis, fireplace, the outdoor shower, you know, other small things, under on matrimon site plan with this application for a deck. So if you approve this application, my question is, do those other things become approved because it's on the site plan you're approving for this deck or not? I don't know. The second thing that I want to add is it doesn't appear that there were a B&amp;B license on this property, as required by 133-14. There's no licenses in the file, past or current, and there was only a old letter asking the applicant to apply for a license dated back, I think it was 2003, it was quite old. So, and then the third comment that I'd like to make is that if there are new documents being submitted... So, and then the third comment that I'd like to make is that if there are new documents being submitted after this hearing this evening, I would request that the hearing remain adjourned and remain open so that the Heights and public and the neighbors can have comments or ask questions about any additional new information that's submitted after this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
Thank you. I'm James Cowens. I'm Bill's brother. I have conflict because I'm his brother. But I would like to speak to the nature of the house. I'm a life on the resident. My father, David Cummings, bought the house that we lived in as children from his mother, Stella Cummings, who lived next to the Catholic Church apartment. As far as I can remember, it was always Mrs. Paul's house and Mr. Paul's rooming house. And Mrs. Paul ran it as a rooming house since before any knowledge of code when I was this tall. So I'd like to speak to the fact that whether it's a bed and breakfast, whether it's a rooming house, it has always been rented in some way, as far as I can remember. As far as the outdoor use of the property, there is a front porch on the property right now where the guests can sit and rock to their heart's content on a porch. If we look across the street in the parkland of the Heights, there's a hammock and a couple of chairs for the guests or anyone to come and enjoy. So as far as outdoor use of the area, it already exists. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience want to comment on this application?
Yes. Hi, my name is Beth Swansstrom. I own the Bed and Breakfast at Southern Sturridge Point Road. When I purchased the home, it had a deck which two guest rooms share. And I've been for ten years and we've never had a complaint from any neighbors regarding animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Christina, do we have anybody?
To clarify one thing, the bed and breakfast use is not a non-conforming use. It's in the A Zone, so it's a permitted accessory use so long as you have the license. So we, I think we have to look into whether or not a license has been issued, but again, it's a permitted accessory use.
So I'm going to recommend we keep this hearing open?
And also, it's my understanding that if there are other things that are not the code, but you're approving this even though it's on the site plan, you're approving specific area of coverage. You're not approving anything else. So if there are other things outstanding, it's not blessed by your.
Right. We're just here to rule on what is in the application.
Yeah, it's the relief requested. That's all that's.
Not like it.
Like it to the property.
Yep.
Correct. But again, those issues need to be investigated.
Okay, so we're going to page this.
Lisa?
I'm sorry. Pat, yeah, please come up and state your name.
Pass on to one local staff. You, I just want to mention that the wards are not year-round residents, Regina and I are. And they do rent their house from time to time as well. So they're not going to be impacted because they're not there most of the time. They live in Madison Committee. And I just want to make that clarification because I think it's an important one.
Not sure. Leave it open with the landscaping plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. No, we're definitely going to keep this open and Matt is going to provide a screening plan to the board, which will, Christine will make readily available to whoever needs to see it.
Yes.
We don't need to do any motion or anything because it's open, right?
Well, you're going to make a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, that's right. Okay.
But we would also require that, Matt, can you get it at least a week before the next meeting so the public could have an.
So that's by October ninth, please, Matt.
And will it be open for any further questions before that?
Yes.
October ninth? I'm sorry, it's a screening and for further questions about the project or?
No, this is fully open.
It's fully open. So you can still submit letters, you can still, yeah.
And you could appear and ask questions at the next.
The next one. Okay, so we're going to keep it open. Can I get adjourned a motion to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn it.
To the next one?
To the next.
November thirteen?
November meeting.
And I'll second it.
November, what would that be?
Thirteen.
Thirteenth.
All in favor? I agree. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we call Bill?
Yes.
Do you have another pen?
Isn't there anything?
Oh, okay, we're good. Thanks.
Here I am on the application of Sixty Smith Street LP. Owner of the Sixty Smith Street Shelter Island, New York, which is on T and is more specifically described on the Suffolk County tax map at seven hundred dash fourteen dash three dash seventy-two point five. The applicant wishes to purchase eight-foot deer fence and install it in subject property and is seeking a variance from Shelter Island Town Project in one thirty-three dash twenty-nine A, one, A, and B. The correspondence in support of the application was received from Kathleen Ryan Gerard and from Stephen Sero on behalf of the collection manager. Mr. Chairman, I have to appease myself because the applicant is my employer.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I'll be when they're done, so.
Okay, you have someone to present?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Wagner. I'm returning with citizens out on Adler and Hyman on the motor parkway. If you can, I see the applicant. We have, there's a post and mailing, a rolling order, and I picked it up. I'd like to start by presenting a series of exhibits that I'd like to make part of the presentation by kind of in bulk, it'd be more time efficient. And, and I know that our landscape architects have their own submissions that they'd like to make as well. So I will hand these up now as exhibits. One through nine, which I asked to be made part of the record, the application. And I'll give you a brief synopsis of what each of them are.
You got the extra copy? Is it like a one exhibit or?
Exhibit is down at the bottom. Each one is one copy of each.
One copy of each. Okay, so we'll have.
Okay, so if you had additional copies, I can always provide them.
Is there something we're supposed to be looking at now?
Yes.
So hand them out, yeah.
It's a one copy, yeah.
It's only one copy.
There's only one copy?
I have, I have extra copies I can show you as well. I have one, one extra copy.
Oh, okay. All right.
And we also have some of the visuals, copies, there were visuals that we have on boards that we can show you during the presentation. So just, just to give you a summary of what those are, you know, they're part of the record. I'm not going to refer copiously to them, but they're in the record just to complete the documentation for the, for the project. Exhibit one, like you see there is a copy of our September twenty-third, two thousand fourteen deed, which includes the subject property. That's, that's just to establish our patient's standing here. Exhibit two is a copy of the reported April third, two thousand and four original conservation easement based on the property in favor of the iconic land trust. Exhibit three is a copy of the reported December twenty-second, two thousand and six amendment to conservation easement, which established a second conservation easement area on the subject property. Exhibit four is a large eleven by seventeen copy. I believe we have a computer. So we have filed that's on here. What does that show? It's basically a aerial map. It shows, it shows the purchase of development rights being on the entire parcel. I'm going to describe to you in a minute as part of the history. Also, it shows the two Eastman areas that are established by those two Eastman doctors.
Do you have more copies of this that everybody could look at this at the same time here?
It's in the handout.
It's one.
In the handout that you passed? Back page. It's. Oh, yeah, it's the documents. Okay, next to that page. Thank you.
And that is just according to exhibit four. It shows the conservation easement areas on the subject property, south end of the subject property. It also shows on the other side, the proposed location of the fencing that we're talking about tonight, which is perimeter fencing around the entire property for purposes of excluding deer from the property. And it shows on there the proposed setbacks of that fencing from the property lines. Exhibit five is an April twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three letter to the Suffolk County Farmland Committee and enclosures there too, which include agriculture development initiative by the Farmland Committee dated April twenty-four. Exhibit six, just.
Can you, hang on one second. Is five, is that this one?
No, no.
Okay. Okay.
So you're presenting something you can't all look at here?
Well, like I said, I do have an extra that I can share with you.
If you have any extras for everyone here, that'd be great.
No, I have, I have one extra. I apologize. I can pass these around if you can certainly use these.
Have a PowerPoint or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe that's part of the application.
If, if you want to speak, you need to come up to the lectern and state your name for the record.
No.
Okay, thank you. We're just trying to follow along.
Exhibit six in the package is a copy of the Shelter Island Year and Six survey from two thousand seventeen, prepared by the Year and Six Committee. Exhibit seven is a two thousand nineteen year management plan, also prepared by the Shelter Island Year and Six Committee and also by the Shelter Island Police Department. Exhibit eight are quotes of some existing conditions around the subject property. And exhibit nine are some renderings that we prepared for you to show the proposed fences viewed from the street, which is the sole street frontage on the south side of the property. So we're here tonight to obtain, really a single issue situation. We're here to obtain whatever necessary height variances are required to install an eight-foot-high deer fencing within the boundaries of the property. This fencing is necessary to prevent destruction of the agricultural crops and other vegetation that are proposed to be established on the subject property in connection with the Suffolk County approved farm use of, of the subject property. I'll give you a little introduction to the property itself and then the history that puts us here today. This property is known as Sixty Smith Street. It's a property sixty-three point five seventy-eight acres in area. And it's located, as you can see from the visuals, located at the northwest corner of Smith Street and North Baywood Road. In two thousand and two, the county of Suffolk acquired development rights to the subject property. Thereafter, between two thousand and four and two thousand and six, two conservation easements were shown on a site app I referred to earlier, exhibit four, and are depicted as conservation easement area one, which was thirty point seven acres, and conservation easement area two, which is nineteen points, point one acres, were granted to the iconic land trust on the southern portions of the property. And that's exhibits two and three that I referred to earlier, those are the forty grants of conservation easement.
You said thirty point seven and then nineteen point one?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Following these purchase of development rights I mentioned earlier and replacement of these two conservation foods on the property, the subject property still remained viable and available for farming purposes. And based upon that, the owner of the subject property made an application to the Suffolk County Farmland Committee pursuant to the Suffolk County Development Rights Program for a proposed agricultural use of the subject property as the Shelter Island acres farm and orchard. That's the timing of the project. What was proposed by that application is a more active agricultural use than the existing equine operation of the property. As you may be aware, the property was used for boarding of horses. And the last time we checked it, there were three horses still alive and allowed to stay there as long as, as they still live. But as, once that, that use discontinues, the horses are not there anymore. The proposal replaces that use, that whining use, with a more active agricultural use that will consist of orchard use and also growing of grain crops in the future and life.
So this is sort of dependent upon the lifespan of the horses? No, I'm, I'm asking. I know you would have to introduce yourself.
This is the applicant's report. I'm Matt Christopher Giedrasz. I represent the applicant. Currently, it's actually only one horse remaining and we're working with Laura Todd Hill to maintain the horse on the property for the rest of its life. However, along with Suffolk County and the clinic, we are also working to rehabilitate the farmland. So it's being done in conjunction. This approval of the fence is the last piece we need to achieve the goals of the easement that will put on property by the town, the clinic, and Suffolk. And so it is technically two narratives, one with one horse remaining that will live amongst the farmland until it passes. And then the second being the settlement of a proper agricultural site.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So what we're talking about tonight is the future, as opposed to the past, which is the equine use, which is now almost terminated.
Could you speak up a little louder, please?
Yes. So as I said, there was an application made to the Suffolk County Farmland Committee and for this, this proposed future agricultural use I'm describing to you. And that application included, among other things, the proposed installation of an eight-foot-high perimeter deer fence, which was in compliance with the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Services specifications. It was designed in accordance with specifications. On March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, Suffolk County Farmland Committee granting conditional approval of the applicant's proposal, as I described. Now, given the several development restrictions on the subject property from the prior conservation easements and the sale of development rights to the county initially, well, to all those restrictions on the property, agriculture at this point is the only viable use of this, of this property. And is the, is what we're going forward with to basically, as Matty described, to renovate, rehabilitate the property, be able to get the use of the property. So why are we here with an eight-foot-high fence? The deer problem on Shelter Island is, is well documented as it exists elsewhere in the county. Here are continuing issue, deer rousing, damage to natural vegetation, landscaping, gardens, and crops is a significant problem, not only on Long Island, but throughout the Northeast. And I gave you as part of the record, we know this already, but I gave you the 2017 Shelter Island year and tick survey. That's exhibit six. And that that had some interesting findings in it. The survey revealed that all people who responded to that survey, 72% of those who thought there was a deer density problem on Shelter Island gave the reason for their, for that opinion as what they call rousing damage. 96% of the country respondents said they had seen deer or evidence of deer on their shelter property. 85% reported that their vegetation had in fact been damaged by deer. And 57% reported using a deer fence to control the deer from causing that damage. In addition, the 2019 deer management plan, which I submitted a copy of, prepared by the same year and tick committee, and which actually referenced the 2017 survey I just described, reported that, quote, "Shelter Island deer population recently estimated over 100 deer per square mile is unequivocally over abundant." So if you're going to have any kind of meaningful agricultural use on this property, you have to have some protection from the foraging deer. That's what we're here today. Why eight feet? Well, the fencing question is exactly that height because that's what USDA National Resource Conservation Service specifications call. That was what was provided to the county when we got the patient to the farmland committee. And that was what was approved by the county. And you can find that, you can find the requirement for that fence to be eight feet high in the county approvals that I gave you copies of, specifically on page four of the March 23, 2023 Farmland Committee Resolution approving the application. And you also find it on page three of the April 24, 2023 Agricultural Development Project, which was the consequence of the resolution of approval. The two documents are together in that one exhibit. And they both specifically call out the requirement for a deer fence that is eight feet high. What are we, where are we proposing to put this fence? We have proposed setbacks of fence of eight feet from the side of rear yards of the subject property, which is consistent with the zoning requirements for the Seaside District. And we are also proposing defense along Smith Street frontage to be entirely beyond the 30-foot setback that's required by the 30-foot front setback for structures. Therefore, for the town code for the Seaside District. That's in section 133-10B5. So as I said before, the purpose of the fence is to prevent deer from accessing and destroying the cultivated areas of the proposed farm operation on the property. And as designed by the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service, the fence, this fence, eight feet, is the minimum necessary to prevent deer from accessing the property and destroying the crops. So that's the background, how we got to be here today. What, sheltered by its grant of variance? For that, we go to what I'm sure you're familiar with Town Law Section 267B, which sets what the criteria for issuance of an area variance, such as where. Probably also aware that the basic design of Town Law Section 267B is to allow for a balancing test, take what's basically a balancing in your determination the benefits of the applicant if the variance is granted as weighted against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. It's the language of the statute. Statue goes on and provides you in 267B, 3B, five specific factors that you should consider in making your determination whether to grant variance. The first factor is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Well, as I said before, the proposed fence, it will be set back well in excess of the minimum 30-foot front setback required in the Seaside zoning district.
It's going to be 30 feet back in, in all of its, in, all over the place or just on Smith Street?
Just on the, on the Smith Street side, that's considered the front lawn.
Yeah, 10 feet.
And there is a requirement in the Seaside District that you have a minimum 30-foot setback for all structures.
Right, but I think that the Midway roadside is also considered a front yard setback because it's on a road. So you actually have front yard setbacks on any place where, where the property is, where there's road frontage.
Right, and, and I believe we're in excess of 30 feet on that side as well. And anywhere where we have road frontage, we are 130 feet. In fact, we are not only 30 feet, we are proposing our fence to be set back at least 84 feet, which is almost three times the required setback. And that's along most of the frontage, the Smith Street frontage. On the force of the frontage, west of the site entrance from, from Smith Street, which comes in from the south, we're proposing that the fence be set back 123 feet, which is actually more than four times the required setback. So just we're voluntarily taking that fence and moving it as far out of sight as we possibly can, away from the road. At that distance, and that's what we've heard the videos, at that distance, we wanted to, we wanted to show you that the fence really is not significant in any way, shape, or form. It's practically invisible to the eye. You know, especially if someone driving by on the road is not going to notice an eight-foot fence as opposed to a six-foot fence. It'll probably, it'll probably be totally transparent to them as they drive by.
On Smith Street?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's the one place we can actually drive along the full frontage of the property. There is frontage, as the chairman said, along Midway, but it's relatively minor compared to the rest. So also bear in mind that there's very few existing residences around the perimeter of this property. So as for those residences, we're talking about the side yard setback, which would be 10 feet back. But again, considering the nature of what we're proposing, which is a basically a mesh fence that you can see right through. Again, it does not present any intrusive visual effect to the adjoining property and the limited number of residents there.
And that's 10 feet from the property line?
Yeah, the fence will be 10 feet into the property line, which conforms to the required minimum 10-foot setback in the zoning, again, on the Seaside zoning.
I have one question. On the corner of Smith Street and Midway Road, that fence looks pretty close to the road for one section of it. On, on this one map I have.
I'm Serena Nelson, just Nelson for all landscape records. And I could speak to that, there's a drainage way there, just a deep depression. And so for reasons of public safety, it's a recommendation of the Suffolk County Farmland Committee that was skirt around that. So instead of the 84 feet, we jog closer. So we're right about the typical setback in that location.
When you say typical setback, what would that be, ma'am?
The 30-foot setback.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay. It didn't really show here on this map, good.
Well, hard to see from the area.
30 feet on Smith Street and Midway?
Each, each street is required to have a minimum 30-foot setback for any structure because of the front, this front yardage there. And as, as I'm explaining, you know, we're in excess at 30 feet because we wanted to pull it back as far as possible, take it out of sight as much as we can and reduce the visibility of it and therefore any impact on the neighborhood or the community. That's, that was the intent.
Okay. Go answer my question, thank you.
So. What's interesting about the setbacks along Smith Street as well is that one of, I believe, one of the reasons that we're here tonight is because we were told that we can't have an eight-foot fence because of section 13329, A1A of code, which provides that no fence or wall in a front setback area shall have a height greater than four feet measured from the ground. But as I just pointed out, these fences are not in the front setback area, which would be 30 feet. They're substantially behind it. So that, that particular restriction, the four-foot height restriction, does not apply to what we're trying to do here. Second part of why we're here is the 13329A1B, which provides that no fence or wall in a rear or side yard shall have a height greater than six feet from the ground. So allow a little higher side yard than you would in the preceding section. And that's, this is really the variance that we're asking for. We ask you go from six feet to eight feet along most of the property, side yards and the rear yards. I think I've covered most of the first, first factor, which is whether an undesirable change can produce the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting. We, we don't consider that there's going to be an undesirable change because you're just not, are not going to see this thing from, from the appropriate vantage.
I mean, I see it now.
Right, can you tell the difference between a six-foot and eight-foot?
Just to, no, your implication is you don't see it.
Well, but you see it, but it's not, it's not an opaque fence. You can still see.
I'm curious, how, how it came to be that this fence already exists for part of the property?
I can't answer that. I think it was probably put up inadvertently as part of the site preparation. But, you know, the, the reality is we're here today and, and, you know, to tell the truth, there was a, the building firm noticed it and did ask us to come, you know, and fly the fence. So that's why we're here. I mean, we consider that we need that approval, you know, for this to go forward. And indeed, you know, if we can't get the eight-foot fence, we essentially don't have a farm. We don't be able to keep the deer out.
There's no alternative to an eight-foot fence?
Not that will stop the deer. That, that's, that's the idea. You know, the code in fact recognizes that. I believe it allows eight-foot fence in certain garden areas that's designed to keep deer out, which is called the eight feet. So there's some recognition there that the minimum effective height to stop deer is, is eight feet.
Have any, like, lower double fencing been considered? That's a viable alternative too, to do a lower height with a double fence? Has that, was that considered, do you know?
I don't know if that has been considered. I could actually.
Hi, Matthew Petrus again. It was considered. We actually have it on another property and I will say it is ineffective in stopping the deer.
You have it on a Shelter Island property?
Correct.
Okay.
Because I'm curious, because in the Suffolk County Farmland Committee application and, and I guess in the approval, it's on page four, where it talks about the deer fencing, it says the fence will be used to minimize proploss and disturbance through the deer grazing. A total of 7,408 feet, linear feet of fencing around the property shall be eight feet in height. A total of approximately 172 feet of fencing on either side of the driveway gates along Smith Street shall be four feet in height and form a double row. So would that be some, would that be something that would be effective? That, I mean, are you going to have one section of ineffective fencing and the rest of it effective?
So I will say, since we received that approval almost a year ago, we have changed plans based on our evidence on another property. And so you'll notice from the already partial fence up that it is eight feet all the way around.
Okay, is there anything being called?
So that's, that doesn't match then the approval that you got from the county, is that correct?
That area does not, no. We have since spoken with them about it and they're fine with the adjustment. But they're not fine with.
Do you have paperwork for their being fine with that?
No, we can call the committee chairman, Sarah.
That'd be great.
Yep. And what I will say is that we are currently in arrears right now on the easement because we are unable to meet our commercial threshold for agriculture because we do not have a deer fence. So we have been at this for three years. And it seems that every trustee of this property, the town included, feels that it is advantageous to make it more difficult to achieve this fence.
So is this the first difficulty you've run into with the town or there have been other difficult moments?
No, this is the first difficult.
Okay.
The fact that there is no agricultural code, yet you hold an easement on agricultural parcel of land seems illogical to me.
Does the town own?
Yeah, they're one of the trustees.
All right, because I thought it was county and then iconic land trust.
And the town.
And the town.
Iconic Land Trust is the grantee of conservation easement.
So it's not the town?
I have, you know, I have my point into the details of that, but we, we did, we did apply it to them.
It's, I don't think the town has involvement.
I apologize, I.
Okay.
Oh, no worries.
I'm just, I'm incredibly frustrated as someone who sat through multiple committee meetings trying to do what we view as create an asset for the community and rehabilitate a piece of land that has gone waylaid and left almost abandoned prior to the owner's purchase of it.
We, we, we don't question the, the.
Odits.
The, the, which I said, the advantageous nature of having this farmed. That's not what we're, you know, we, we've had multiple applications for eight-foot fences come before us and we haven't approved any of them.
On agricultural parcels?
Well, where people were attempting to call them agricultural parcels, I'll say.
Okay. Which is different than this. Which is an actual agricultural parcel. And I will say outside of Sylvester Manor, I believe the only one on Shelter Island.
Yeah.
Sylvester Manor's got an eight-foot fence on that farm.
Uh, can, yeah, I just wanted to ask a question before we, so nothing's being cultivated right now?
No.
Okay, and is there a layout of where actual crops would be growing? Like a plan, like the proximity of those fields to the fencing?
It's literally the entire field you see in the area. We want to cultivate and grow the entire 63 acres.
Okay, so like from fence to fence?
Correct.
And there is an area, just to drill down a bit, there is an area that's designated as an orchard area on the property, which we devoted to orchard production. There will be cider apples from there and in addition, this possibly eating apples and pears, which will be used to flavor the cider.
Okay, and this would be a commercial venture or a private venture?
It would be a hybrid. We have to meet our commercial threshold for Suffolk in sales and we would do it through private partnerships, possibly with Sylvester Manor and so forth.
Okay, and do you know what percentage would be commercial versus private at this point?
So in order to meet the 10,000 threshold, it would be all of it would be commercial.
Okay. All right.
What would the other crop, so you're going to have the orchard, but what are you growing on every other side?
The grain and we're going to do cattle grazing. All right, please.
Okay, there was, there's a, on page three of the Suffolk County Farmland Committee, I think, it's noted that the applicant did receive a denial from the iconic land trust placement of the orchard barn and then there was discussion about swapping some land. Has that, has that happened?
Yeah. The easement, yes.
Okay, so can we get some paperwork on that as well? Thank you.
But that strictly pertains to the zoning of the orchard barn, nothing else.
Okay, and we don't believe that there is an eight-foot fence at Sylvester Manor, to my knowledge.
Yes.
There is?
Where they're growing the vegetables, that's eight foot.
But it's less than 10% of the property.
Right.
That's the thing, that's the difference. Because the town.
In a variance.
Right, the town, the town allows less than 10% of your property, a fence with an eight-foot.
But they do have an eight-foot.
But they do have an eight-foot.
Yeah.
Okay, and the less than 10%. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else presenting here, any other? If you'd like to come up and speak, please, you need to come up and ahead. Yeah, just come right up.
Serena Nelson again. So I think along with Sylvester Manor, this parcel is one of two historic preserved and state-recognized agricultural lands. So it's our understanding in the design of it that the agricultural equipment necessary to perform the operations is essentially what the fence is. It's what we consider agricultural equipment, right? It's standard agricultural practice to have an eight-foot height gear fence. It's what Suffolk County required in supporting our application to have.
I don't think they required. I think they approved your application.
They recommended and wanted to see that put in place.
Yeah, so I didn't see that in their paperwork.
Yeah. So in our working with them for months and going to their committee multiple times, that was something they felt strongly was important to have on valuable agricultural land. And they literally consider it part of farm equipment. So the restriction here is because this parcel is in a residential zone that it's subject to residential zoning, but it's actually an agricultural parcel. There's no residences on the property, and it's been that way. So it is historic agricultural land, you know, of significant size, different from small garden parcels that are 10% as a subset of another property. The full property is fully agricultural. There are state-recognized agricultural soils that are prized for such. We had to come up with a soil protection plan. So, you know, any improvements, you have to make sure we're preserving the topsoil and reusing that on the site. So for instance, the roads that we were very carefully proposing, any soil that we disturb in installing those roads, we're going to use in the orchard area grading. So it's actually a really thoughtful plan trying to bring about beneficial agricultural programs to be a viable commercial operation, you know, that really will be a benefit to the residents. And the fence itself, you know, we were thoughtful, we worked with, excuse me, the in terms of the visual impact, making sure that the aesthetic of the view of the farm property from Smith Street would be a benefit to the community. So that design of setting the fence at 80 feet, you know, exceeding the minimum requirement, and also visually, prospectively, you can see on the boards, you know, in perspective, it looks no different, marginally different from a six-foot high fence if it were installed at the 30-foot area that's allowed. So that's the benefit of setting it in that much further, right? It visually looks almost the same. And, you know, we designed a wildflower meadow to be part of a pollinating feature at the forefront of that property.
Between fencing and a road?
Correct. Between the fencing and the road and inside the fence. So I think this is not, it's a unique situation that doesn't fit the standard residential zoning code. And that's the conflict, and that's what we're asking for the exemption for. And if we don't, I think the next step for us is we have to look for state protections. We consider state defense of agricultural production rights.
Are you an estate-certified ag this year?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think it's 305A. I forget the name of the
No, no, I know the ag market statute, but I just wanted to make sure you're in a state certified.
We are, and we've already been in touch with them to hope for sort of reinforcement of the intent here. And, but our, you know, our due diligence is to go before the local zoning board first and try to just get approval through a variant.
Could you provide proof that you're an estate certified?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. If we've heard the gist of our application, I want to say something, just to divert for a minute. Serena just talked about this property, and I think she expressed very well the uniqueness of the situation. I know that boards such as yours are always concerned about setting a precedent. And, you know, if you open up the floodgates, everybody will come in. I think that this property, as described, its history, its encumbrances it has on other uses, it is not your typical residential property, very unique situation. It's a farm. It wants to be a farm, needs to be a farm. And everything that we've researched indicates that it cannot be a farm unless protected from the deer. The deer will have a field that they'll come in here and fill their bellies, and the deer will cease to exist. So I mean, we have a lot of vulnerable crops that we're proposing. The only way to protect those crops is to have an effective fence high enough to stop them from eating more. And that's all we're trying to do here. We're asking for a two-foot variation. It's only 33% variance from the six-foot requirement, the six-foot maximum requirement in the code going from six to eight. And that difference, that two feet, is the difference between a farm and a disaster. So that's what we're asking.
And there would be no alternatives to that? You couldn't do a four-foot fence and a six-foot fence or something? Two four-foot fences? I mean, I see it in action. It seems to work well.
Yeah, I don't have, I can't speak to that. I mean, I've heard that Matthew has some field experience with it. I'm certainly not an authority on that.
Yeah. Sure. Serena Nelson again. The double four-foot, as a landscape architect, we've tried the double four-foot often to, in residential cases most often, there's a height restriction. You know, it's sometimes effective. It's most, it can be effective, but for a condition like this, for an agricultural operation, it's an insufficient standard, and it is not 100% effective. So I think, you know, only, and that's why the NRCS recommends the eight-foot fence as standard agricultural practice because that's what will actually guarantee that you keep the deer out.
I have one concern about, so if the deer are no longer on this giant swath of land, now they're going to be on Smith Street with cars and like the hazard of the deer no longer being on that property. Is that something we should talk about?
It's something that you can consider, yes.
Yeah.
Susan, if you want to speak, you have to present, you have to come up to the, and speak.
Okay.
Well, one more thing. You spoke about a meadow that you were going to plant. Do you have any renderings or any? All right, submit them.
It's on the board, actually. So it's hard to see, but it's that sort of dappled texture.
Would you be able to flesh that out a little bit more?
It's actually planted, and you can see it if you drive by. It's in its second year. It's kind of still getting established. It will be better some of the coming years.
Yeah.
It's mostly inside the fence. It's somewhat inside and outside.
I would just want to document that because if the board was going to approve this, we would want to make sure it's maintained, and we would want something to document what it is. So it's maintained in perpetuity, okay?
As you're aware, you can impose reasonable conditions for you, whatever is appropriate. Right, so I'm taking up too much of your time already. I went through most of the criteria just in passing. Self-created hardship is always an issue when evaluating environments. Reality is that we didn't put the deer on Shelter Island until we know that we control their foraging behavior. That's what's driving the situation. We're doing something good with the community. We're establishing a farm. We want to preserve that farm. That's not, that's not the hardship, is that we can't keep the deer out if we can't have the eight-foot fence. And that's a fact of life that we did not create. I think on the whole, if you look at what we're proposing and look at the criteria of it's not sustainable going from six to eight feet, it's not going to have an adverse impact on the environmental community because of the visual mitigation measures we've taken to move it back from the road, and also the see-through nature of the fence. And, you know, going back to the balancing test, which is the root of all area variance applications, the benefit that we're trying to achieve, which should have, you know, have a viable reuse of this swollen-by-the-way-side property as an active farm, certainly outweighs the detriment to the community. In fact, I can't stand here and honestly tell you that I see what its detriment to the community is by having a slightly higher fence and an active farm on that property that serves.
Is it possible that precedent could be a detriment?
Well, that's why I brought that up before, Mr. Chair. Because, I mean, the way around, as the zoning board myself, I know the way around precedent is to find uniqueness in the situation. And I've written many decisions myself where I've pointed out what the uniqueness is in my rationale. Doing that, I prevent other people, Donnie Conley, Lee, from coming in and saying, no, they got it, I should get it. Well, you don't have the same unique circumstances. This is the only property on Shelter Island of this nature right now that has come this far, has got the approvals that we have. And as Matthew said before, you know, this is the last step in the process. We get past this, we're able to start our farming operation. Without it, we still have nothing. Because there's no point planting crops and we'd see them disappear when the deer come on their first forage.
And let me ask you, what kind of timeframe would be looking at if you were approved for some sort of fence between now and farming? When would you start building the structures? When would you start allowing the fields? When would you start planting the seeds?
So we've been for several years now, as I mentioned, working on the meadow. So that's been two years in operation. We've done two rounds of seeding. We did a first like scalp meadow and then drill seed, and then we did another discing and overseeding. We partially cleared an orchard area. We're going to continue the clearing. And the soil that we're going to install, the first portion of our road, is hopefully in the fall. And then the materials I was talking about, the soils, we're intending to use that to recreate the orchard area. So it's a slow process, but we're intending to put in a cover top and start building the soil health that we need for the orchard area. The fields, the initial conversation, our initial vision included rain and grazing. We're hoping to start the grazing as soon as next year. And having the fence would be hugely beneficial to having that operation be viable.
How much of the area is grazing versus growing grains?
I would say it's probably 70% pasture. The grain operation, we were going to start with an initial test plot. So we're kind of building towards a long-range grain operation, but it's pseudo-pasture now. So the grazing program, we can get going right away. So the grain, you know, is a longer venture, but we've also discussed hay. That's another possibility. But, so we're on our way. We're trying to make incremental progress. You know, we've been trying to find the right staff to continue the operation. But, you know, there's work in progress, and we have to actually demonstrate that as part of our purchase of development, excuse me, the Suffolk, yeah, the purchase of development rights in the Farmland Committee program, right? We have to demonstrate that we're actually working towards that plan and renew our permit and application every year.
And so you say it's a bit of a long process. How long would it be before we're growing some grains or planting some trees in the orchard?
Trees in 2026.
2026.
That's, yeah. And like I said, grazing next year.
I had one more question about, because we have to consider the viable alternatives. And while we appreciate your experience with the two-four-foot fences, would you be able to provide these scientific sort of
Literature.
literature or something that proves that they're not efficacious?
Yeah, I mean, I would just, what I would say is that standard agricultural practice is an eight-foot-high deer fence that you see all over Long Island. So I think that is the standard, and the double four-foot is below that standard.
Would you have any literature to support that? Just so we can say that we've considered viable alternatives?
That from the NRCS directly is what I would submit as the
Well, maybe you could submit that.
It is. It's the cut sheet of the fence is produced by the NRCS.
Now, that's, but that's not them stating that that's the only way to do it.
Okay, we can submit, we recommend that.
Great.
This is their recommended detail.
Holly Marks and Nelson Bird walks my work.
Yeah, we're looking, we're trying, because, we're this is new for us too, but we're trying to do our due diligence and do our jobs correctly. So if you could provide some evidence that the two-four-foot fences, not that it's suggested, but that it's not efficient.
I may know of it.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure if that is a specific scientific study that we can point to.
Okay.
But in practice, the reason that the eight-foot fence is recommended is because it is more efficacious. And we're experiencing a find that the double four-foot fence is often not efficacious. And in a plot like this, the reason that agricultural plot is different is because when you're just using it in a residential use, the deer, let's say, it's not so attractive to the deer. There's some stuff in there that they might want to eat, right? But they're not looking at a full candy shop. So the eight-foot fence becomes necessary because those two-four-foot fences are no longer so effective when you're looking at what could be a very, you know, enticing piece of property for them to get up just in, you know, a way that we can all understand it. And I would also just speak to population dynamics of ecosystems. By enclosing this area, it actually has a greater chance of reducing the deer population immediately just because of the area that is currently helping to support the deer population because it is on fence would be closed off to them. So
Right, and then put onto Smith Street with the traffic, right?
Well, no, they're not necessarily going. They just can't get in. So they're not going to hang out there forever, you know, outside some club they can't get into. And that's the basic curve of the law.
Mr. Wagner, you know what the board's asking for, right?
I do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Taking notes.
Yes, thank you.
Just one last point that is regarding, you two are coming around this. What are your requirements that would grant minimum variance necessary to alleviate hardship? So I would point out to you, and you probably have your own knowledge of this, that although we're asking for an eight-foot fence because we consider that as the minimum effective fence to get the deer out, minimum, there are many, many examples of fences sustained with more than that. In my own community, we have fences that are 10 or 12 feet high. Because the farmers want to take no chances. They don't want any doubt.
And they're permitted by the code there?
But they are.
Okay.
But we're not asking for a 10-foot or 12-foot. We're asking for what works, and what works is eight feet.
Okay, so we're just looking for that to be substantiated by some
Right, right. All right, we have our board.
Ma'am, if you'd like to come up and speak, please do.
I would.
Okay.
I'm Kathleen Ryan Gerard. My parents bought property in 1964 when in the 19th, sorry, the 20th century, it was a potato farm. It was derelict when my father bought it. My father's family had a farm in upstate New York. And when he saw this property, he thought this would be very nice. It was nostalgic for him of having his farm, and he had horses on it. And he loved farms. He loved farming. And he would have been so happy to see all the improvements that have been done already to this property and would be thrilled at the prospect of a proper farm now, as I am. This is, to me, a no-brainer. This is another farm on Shelter Island, number one. And the worry about the deer on Smith Street, I live around there. We have too many deer in that area anyway. They'll be there. That's the problem of the town to take care of. It shouldn't be the landowners, and I'm a neighbor and I'm happy with it. So I would hope that you would understand that this has always been a farm, and it should be allowed to be a farm. And that unfortunately, what we have to do is have a fence to have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Sinkada. I'm a neighbor. And I farmed with Doug Ryan for many years. And I agree with everything Kathleen said. But I find it, I don't know the word for it. They have not done the research on the actual area, which I did. I own a company called Birdworks for 10 years. I did bird assessment of the property. And between Doug Ryan's or your field, large field, 66 acres, then you cross Midway or you cross Smithy because deer live within two miles their entire life. They don't go anywhere else. My neighbor next door can't be here tonight, but she has a large garden in front of her house without a fence. I have a large center garden in front of my house without a fence. What happens with the deer and has been, because it has, she has just spoken, it's been fallow for many, many years, which means other species has been there. When I was farming, deer was only part of our conversation. Not once did I hear the major thing, which is groundhogs and squirrels and birds.
And you gotta just address the board.
Oh, sorry.
And also because of the camera. So people can.
I'm sorry, forgive me, I've never done this before. So there are other things, other things that live there. For instance, every night, they all come and they sleep in the school fields and the ball fields. Every morning, they come through the causeway of the town, between ball fields, me and my neighbors, Mr. Kipod, his knee is bad, or maybe he would come tonight because his knee is bad. And they come and they go back. So what will happen is exactly what Lynn has said. They will avoid this large, large, large fence, which really doesn't have to be there because you only need eight-foot fence for deer. So if you've got an orchard and that orchard is over eight feet, you're looking at other predators like birds and things like that. You can net them. You don't have to have a fence around the entire property that's eight-foot. You can do something smaller. When you look at Sylvester Manor with their cattle grazing, they don't have an eight-foot fence all around their cattle grazing. You don't need to. So I would ask the board to look at this and ask them as they come up with their idea and the more experience is to have the eight-foot fence in smaller areas, not necessarily covering a whole road or something like that. So there are causeways so that deer are not concentrated on going onto roads or going anywhere because they are going to be around. They're going to find other areas to be and other species that live there as well. And if they're having a meadow with a fallow ground, milkweed grew abundantly and we had enormous amounts of monarch butterflies. I have now taken on the mantle and had my front garden with milkweed to try and attract them. Other than meshamik, we don't have those anymore. Or you can see an abundance of them more close to your house when you come down where Sylvester Manor is, that field that's there. It's beautiful and you see them there. So if they're thinking of meadow, maybe a meadow also that encompasses what has been living there for years and years that we're not completely blocking it out. If you're thinking of meadow, think of the species that live there. Maybe have a species assessment or something like that to look at, okay, this needs an eight-foot fence, but this doesn't necessarily need it for these things that were grown. Or we have grazing, we don't need that. This way, they can comply with the existing laws and have a farm, which would be fantastic. And the neighbors would not now have complete responsibility of all those deer constantly and all these other species coming onto our lands alone because they don't live there and they will continue to live in that area. That is the nature of their lifespan. And right now, I can handle it, but it's, I mean, you're getting to know me by name. I mean, it's kind of funny. I can almost touch some of them because I've been there 35 years. And this is like the grandchildren. Every morning, you have the morning coffee and you see them. They're not, they're not going to be there anymore. So they're going to be in other areas. So that's a disturbance to traffic, to neighbors, but it doesn't have to be. If there are causeways of the areas that they can traverse that are not detrimental to their performance.
Susan, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. What you're saying is that you would like to see them have eight-foot fences, but only in the areas where an eight-foot fence is necessary to protect the crops?
Right, of course.
You don't feel like they're necessary to protect a bar?
Exactly.
Or a.
Road.
Right.
Or necessarily an orchard. Because if you have an orchard, most of your trees, your pears, your apples and everything are above the graze line of deer where you can net them. You know, deer do not go higher. Like you see rhododendrons and they're gorgeous above the graze line. They're not that tall. They don't jump that high. I mean, eight-foot keeps them out. So if your orchard is eight feet, you don't need that. You need netting like blueberries or things like that. And we are not Weeding River. We are not Riverhead. We are not an agricultural district. We're the country, we're rural. And we have laws that we thought long and wide about. And I think this is something that compromise would really help everything, all the flora and fauna, the farm, which I think is great. I would look at her, I'm sorry. And she's so good. The farm would be wonderful. But I think a lot of thought needs to be going for this in a short amount of time because they're frustrating. But I don't think you have to fence everything while you come up with a plan. I think they can work within a block instead of a viable farm with all the things that they want with better planning. And understanding that, you're going to put an eight-foot fence in and those groundhogs are going to dig under it and eat you out of house and home. You know, they live around. They've been there for 35 years and they even want the deer. I can attest to that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry, turn the page.
Hey, Lori.
Hi, I'm Laura Peter Raymond, speaking, I'm the Shelter Island resident this time for myself. I just have a question. Of all the documents and exhibits that were passed around tonight, they're part of the application that was posted online in the public.
Not originally.
To see and.
Not all of it.
Review and ask questions on them.
Not all of it.
Okay, so if new documents come in, are we going to be able to?
Yeah.
Of course.
We're going to post them online. We're not going to close the hearing tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Please, sir.
Hi, Mike Gaynor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Hi, Stephen Searle, Executive Director, Sylvester Manor. I also grew up on a family farm on the North Fork. I have a lot of experience with agriculture, with farming. I know you asked about precedent and I think it's a great question. I do think that this is a little bit of a different matter because it is on agriculturally preserved land. It's easement. It's specifically for agriculture. You have to farm it. The county requires it or you have to make it available for farming. And so the best way to do that is through a deer fence. We've talked about orchards, talked about even grazing, certainly vegetables, grain, even all of those things. Deer fence is absolutely the way to go. Sylvester Manor would have more deer fence if we could. We have at least 80 acres in easement, agriculturally protected easement area. We would like to have more, but we haven't gotten to that point yet. And we would likely, we hopefully will someday. So it's a matter of precedent on agriculturally protected land. I would not say it's necessarily precedent for residential land, right? This is not something that you would then approve on a three-acre, four-acre, five-acre household. You know, again, speaking both personally and professionally, you would not recommend that. But there are a few select parcels, which I think are really important for this board to consider approving a variance on. And this is certainly one of them. And I think having a deer fence around the entire parcel that is agriculturally protected and is requiring that it be farmed, that this should be approved for that purpose. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions, especially on the farm side. I know there's been a lot of discussion about that. I think it makes a lot of sense for the attorney here and the applicant to look into the research because there is research certainly on why eight-foot fences are effective and even what crops that they protect. But I can tell you, every single working farm on the North Fork, on the South Fork, Riverhead, everywhere on the East End, has a deer fence pretty much. And as I said before, I think it's important precedent for Sylvester Manor as well, right? As we continue to grow our operation and to the extent that we need deer fence, we would certainly want to be able to obtain them for the farm and for the agricultural purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to weigh in? Christina, can we open it up to Zoom land, please? Somebody wants to make a comment?
Hi there, it's Mike Gaynor. Christina, am I on?
Yep, go ahead.
Mike Gaynor, Cobbitts Lane. Thank you very much. This is my first time speaking to the zoning board, so I appreciate the time. I was wondering if I could quickly familiarize myself with the board. I was just curious about the tenure. And some of the other boards have, the members have their tenure printed on the sections of the website. And I just, real quickly, I just wanted to go around the table. I was just curious. Phil, how long have you been on the board, roughly?
Mr. Gaynor, do you have something that's germane to this application?
I'm trying to understand the board. Is that, is that big, is that that big of a deal? Do, is that, I'm just curious.
It's public information.
Yeah, I think there's public information available.
Oh, I couldn't find it anywhere and I'm pretty good at finding information. But, okay. Well, I just wanted to comment. I thought it was great that you, that you noticed that this fence had been erected illegally, portions of it. Do you do enforcement? Is that one of the things that you do? Because I've heard you say that the zoning board of appeals doesn't do enforcement on these things. So you noticed, you said you had personally noticed that the fence had been erected illegally in portions. Is that something you do there?
No, we have no enforcement power.
Okay, but, so you were just saying that personally, you had noticed that it had been erected illegally.
Is it safe?
I'm just curious. To the extent that you're conducting enforcement, like for example, another farm use, Sylvester Manor Educational Park, a 243-acre property that's been operating illegally since 2009. Have you ever noticed that that's been operating illegally without a permit, without a special permit across?
You have a question relevant to this application, sir?
Sylvester Manor has been raised several times throughout this, throughout this application. Stephen Searle came up and discussed it extensively. As a matter of fact, Punch had brought up that that deer fence was erected and you suggested that it was erected legally when in fact, that parcel of property that it's on has been subdivided. It's a tiny little parcel of property, so it is definitely more than 10% of the land over there, that whole farm stand section. So that's not a truthful statement, that's not accurate. So you need to look at that because that's yet another violation that they have on that property. They erected an eight-foot-tall deer fence and they don't have a permit for it. So in any event, thanks so much. I'll see you guys on November 13th. Good talking to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I appreciate the commentary about, you know, alternative modes of micro-managing the issue. I think ultimately, it's a hardship to be restricted to smaller scale, you know, subdivision, breaking up of what is site-wide preserved agricultural land that we should be able to use in its fullest degree of production possible and with the greatest degree of flexibility possible. So I would just argue in favor, you know, to subject this piece of land to the residential restriction when it clearly doesn't fall into that criteria. And there's not a forbidden for an agricultural code on Shelter Island, but that feels like a hardship to the operation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Matthew Tracy Dunn. I just wanted to address Lynn and others' concerns about the deer. Obviously, it is a problem in Shelter Island and we're not passive participants in it. We have been part of the deer maintenance program with Bo Payne for the last five years. And we were actively, I'm actually meeting with him tomorrow to discuss this upcoming season. So it is something we take very seriously. We have discussed the deer fence with him, ways to mitigate the population vote that would remain inside the deer fence, what's constructed and on the perimeter and on the other properties that apply on the farm, most of which we know. And so, again, we're not just saying, here's a deer fence and good luck. So I just wanted that to be made very clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If somebody wants to come in from Zoom land, Christina, will you let them in? You're on.
Yeah, okay, great. Hi, good evening, everyone. My only concern, just looking at the paperwork that we have for this evening, is that the agricultural development permit and the special use permit that they were in fact issued by the farm committee is expired. It shows that it expired on April 24, 2024. So I don't know if that will have any bearing on any decision the zoning board makes this evening, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
And as I was mentioning earlier, it is subject to annual renewal. And so we have been in continuous communication with the Farm Land Committee on our progress.
So I would like to see the next go-around here, something that shows that this is renewed. Stephen, do you have a list of the things that we were asking for by any chance?
No, but we have the video.
Okay, so I'd like to keep the hearing open. I'd like to get all the information that we have requested from all of you at our next meeting in October. Would that be enough time?
Yes.
So just get the calendar up here, second. So that would be the 24th of October.
Third.
Third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
It's in the bottom of the table.
Sorry, I'm really bad with the calendar on the phone here. So that'd be the 23rd of October. If, if you all would take care of your homework and, and bring us the stuff that we've requested, that'd be great. And anybody else on the board have any other thoughts on this? All right, so we're just going to leave this open and, and discuss it again. Tell me the date again, Christina?
October 23rd.
October 23rd. All right?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a, I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We got this.
Make a motion to close.
Yeah, yeah. No, we have one other thing to do.
We've got one more thing to do.
Let me just gather my nuts and berries here.
All right. You.
This is that extra panel exhibits, do you want this?
Yes, I definitely want that.
Is that?
You take that.
Way back in the day?
This was, we, it is off. I'm not, is that the second?
Here, let's see.
I'll go to Lee Mark's.
Oh, okay.
I'll go.
Okay, thank you.
Got with that?
Yeah.
And is that a copy or is that for Christina?
Christina.
I gave Christina the copy.
I'll give you this other one too here, Christina, because why am I going to just have one here?
And, yeah, because I guess she was going to upload it.
Can you send this to Christina, dear Punch?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good.
My pleasure.
Okay, well, it's all right.
Oh, yeah. Four times big guy.
Missed Wheel of Fortune, Punch.
Pardon?
Missed Wheel of Fortune.
Yes, we did.
We have, we're going to just.
Me too.
All right, so.
Me too.
Yeah.
I was watching both.
Okay, so we just have to have a quick, brief discussion here of 12 Wesley Avenue Marquee. I found the dimension we were looking for.
Oh.
Was not easily found. But I don't know if all of you have your paperwork with you or not, but if you go to drawing A101.
Hold on.
I have at least a couple.
Yeah. You have, see, this is where the porch is, and this is the corner of the foundation. And I'll, I'll show everybody in just a sec here, but yeah, so this is that dimension. Reed had it as 13, 11 and 3/4. It's actually 13, 11 and a half. I think he was scaling it, using it. And so that's the dimension that would require a variance for the foundation. And I'll show you right here. You got it? Did you get a punch or not?
Yeah. You got it.
Yeah, okay. So I think that we could discuss this at our next work session, which would be, tell me the date, Christina, come on.
October 16th.
October 16th.
October 16th. So I don't know what action we have to take to, because we just adjourned it.
Yeah, no.
So we, we're not going to do anything tonight, but I think that with that, I think that we're, we'll be ready to work on this at the next work session. Does that make sense to everyone?
Sounds good.
Yes.
It does.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Chairman, I think now on, if plans like this, when you've got so many numbers, you've got to have a full work.
So we have one, one big copy, but for something like this, and also the thing is that that dimension was not drawn on the actual survey, the site plan. And that's, I think that's what made it confusing. We can only see it off the building plan here.
But the point is.
Yeah.
There's so many numbers.
Yeah.
To look at.
I mean.
The small worksheet.
Yeah, look, even on, on some of the stuff from, from 60 Smith tonight.
Right.
The, the print, I, you know, when I was trying to read it at home, I had one set of glasses and then the other set of glasses in front of it.
Right.
To try.
Magnifying.
Yeah. All right, I, I agree, Punch. All right, so we're good to go then? We'll, we'll discuss this at the work session, whatever day it is, Sarah.
October 16th.
October 16th.
October 16th.
And I think that's maybe the end of it for us here, right?
Christina, can I just clarify for Cummings for Three Locusts, what, they're going to be coming back for the October here?
We, we did verbally adjourn to 11 13.
Okay, that's, because we did, when I was thinking, I was like, we did it to November?